Called today's meeting of County Council order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Optional prayer invocation, Ms. Law?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. As we survey the land, we feel small and insignificant. Let us not forget that we are not alone. Count the blessings you have in this day. Get up and make the most of this time, for you don't know what comes tomorrow. Help us to step up and stand tall against our Goliaths. That victory may be won. Let us not allow the death of compassion or righteousness. Let us ask ourselves what we are willing to do to provide our share of the answer, what sacrifices we are willing to make, what we are willing to freely give to make our small part of the world better for all in need. We pray in the name of our Lord. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Law. Moving on, Mr. Smith, roll call please.
Mr. Brenneman?
Here.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Here.
Mrs. Fatika?
Here.
Dr. Faust?
Here.
Mr. Leon?
Here.
Mrs. Law?
Here.
Mr. Horton?
Before we get to the hearing of the public, Councilman DiMatteo has a citation to present.
I would have the gentleman from the Greenfield Volunteer Fire Department step forward. You don't be shy. On behalf of the county, I'd like to present the Greenfield Volunteer Fire Department with the citation. And I'm not going to read it, but I think the noteworthy points are, when I was elected to this office, which Greenfield obviously resides in, they had two volunteers at their fire departments. All right? They missed calls continually, and it wasn't, they dropped the two volunteers. In the last two years, they've built up to 25 members. All right? And in a time where volunteer fire departments are having a horrible time trying to get volunteers, Greenfield has bucked that trend. And in addition to that, in the last two years, they have not missed a call. All right? Not missed a call, which is unheard of for some of the largest volunteer fire departments. Because of that, they were awarded, from the state of Pennsylvania, the Pennsylvania Emergency Health Services Council honored them as the Pennsylvania EMS Agency of the Year. They were the leading volunteer fire department out of 1,300 volunteer departments in the state of Pennsylvania. I think that's quite an accomplishment. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Do you guys want to say a few words? I know Kevin.
All I can say is, what we're trying to do is provide the best, most competent, fastest service to the members of our community that we can provide. And since starting this back up again two years ago, we've managed to not only take care of our own service area, but we supply mutual aid to 10 different departments, three of them in New York State. And so it's an ongoing thing. We only can hope to get better.
It goes to show that the volunteer companies work, they work very hard. They deserve as much support as we can possibly give them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DiMatteo, and thank you, gentlemen, for all your hard work. Moving on, a hearing of the public. Those who called ahead received five minutes. Those who did not call ahead will have three minutes. First on the agenda is Mr. Marvin Cross. Please state your name and your municipality.
The reason I'm here is to, some concern about, put it a nice, travelers that travel in here for business, for paving, asphalt paving, and they operate strictly cash. They pay no taxes here, none whatsoever. And they go to asphalt plants and get material, and drive around, look for people. Specifically, they like elderly people, and they might give a price that's so far out, interior jobs. And this goes on all the time. I get calls about them, you know, well, they did this, they don't, asphalt, grass is growing through because they lay it like this. But they're here for the whole season. They pay zero tax, nothing, absolutely nothing. And then the other little companies around pay everything, the tax, the plates, they run illegal plates. One time you see them, the plate might be Ohio, the next time you might see the same truck, it's got West Virginia on it. And sometimes they'll stick a sticker on their Erie P A. There are nothing there to be, you know. So it's just, it's not fair to the rest of the people here that's doing the business paying the taxes, you know? So there's some way, they gotta be stopped, you know? And they might give a price to a couple, and they'll call back five times. And also, another trick, they know all the tricks. I mean, they got it mastered. Unbelievable how mastered they have everything. But they'll pave the driveway, and the people are not happy. A lot of people are not happy, and they're ashamed that they got taken. That's what it amounts to. But they'll have a pickup, another pickup with them. So if the people give them a check, they have that runner go to the bank, cash that check before the people could ever stop paying. Impossible. So like I said, they're real masters about all of them. And it just affects all the little businesses. There's seven, eight small companies that do residential and commercial paving, and these companies, I mean, they stay at the motels for the summer. One company, Roadway Roads, they're in, they're off of Harbor Creek Route 5. They're at a building, but nobody knows about them. Can't get a hold of them. If you call back, you're not going to get a hold of them. So the county, I'll look at something maybe, I don't know if they can, if it's legal, but some license, and make sure they got a federal ID number. As far as getting state license, anybody can get one, and that means absolutely nothing. So that's something you should take a look at. Here's just a little magazine, I'm a construction guy, talking about this guy that really got taken.
Thank you.
Oh, this is unbelievable. I could tell you the story after story. The call traveled, but I had to call something else. How are you?
Good. How's yourself?
I'm good. Good. Thank you. I think I knew you somewhere a long time ago.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Randy Barnes. Randy?
Good evening, Council. My name's Randy Barnes. I live in Dr. Faust's district. And I thought I'd talk a little bit about things we started talking about about two and a half years ago, and that was this failure of what we saw as an inland port proposal. And of course, we read recently where we're concerned whether we're, the taxpayers are going to get the $3 million back that was lent to them in an agreement signed in 2006, and the money started being spent in 2013. In that agreement that was signed in 2006, there was provisions in there to get quarterly updates, and council was going to vote on that, that they agreed with what was going on once a year. And we know from our discussions past couple of years, not much of that took place. So as stewards of our tax dollars, council did a very poor job of holding up their end of overseeing this $3 million loan. Just recently, and I don't know if you were invited to it, but on February of, February 19th last month, there was a meeting held, and a new rail study was presented. And I don't know if council was invited to it, but I'll highlight the two things that kind of stand out, the top two, first two things they found out. And this was a study that taxpayers paid $130,000 of state money for this latest rail study. It started in November of 2014, and was presented February of 2016. And on the left-hand side of the column, it says case study research assumptions, and on the right-hand side of the column, it says feasibility study market. Left-hand side, it says a large study's sustainable freight volume is necessary. The conclusion was, based on the industry survey, no large study's sustainable freight volumes were identified. That was the top thing they found out. The second thing they found out was assumptions, a large anchor is needed in many cases to make the facilities viable. Right-hand side of the column, what they found out was, no large anchor appears available. So council stood by for several years and watched this economic development team come before you and talk about this grand inland port, and this grand rail terminal that was going to be in Albion at one time, then it ended up going to be in Harbor Creek, with hundreds of trucks going in and out every day. $60 million investment. Now, how many business people stood together with that team three years ago and said, "We need this"? Was it 10? Was it nine? Was it five? Was there even one business person that came forward in that time and said, "We need this to preserve or create jobs"? No. Should you realize something? Did several people, including myself, come before you and say, "This is a fallacy? This is a joke? This is a waste of money"? This is, remember we talked about Muskrat Minerals? Muskrat Minerals was the company from Canada that was going to build the $375 million smelting plant in Albion. Remember I told you maybe you should buy the Muskrat Mineral stock because it was only 70 cents a share? Get in when it's low, you know, buy low, sell high? Well, today, that Muskrat Mineral stock is 30 cents a share. They changed their name to Matalo, so 30 cents a share. So it's probably a good thing you didn't follow my advice two years ago and invest your retirement into Muskrat Minerals. The problem is, the citizens of Erie have invested $3 million into this fallacy, but they've invested even more of that because when the county council, county executive, Ms. Dahlkemper, was a representative in Congress, she brought back a $494,000 cardboard check for the inland port. I don't even know how it fit in the car, it was so big, or on the airplane, because it was a big check, and presented. So that's $494,000 that this group has spent, that we get nothing for. So we won't get that back. That wasn't a loan, that was a grant. They could spend that however they wanted, and they spent it on salaries and things. So I guess what we need to learn is, when we're, when we have these organizations come to us and want money, we have to be diligent and be in a good liaison, whether it be the liaison that's represented for that, or even any of you council people need to ask questions. We need to ask Mr. Maloney to look at the books. If you ask 100 people, "Hey, will you pay me back in two years, a loan? You don't have to pay anything now, but will you pay me back in two years"? What do you think those 100 people would say? They'd say, "Of course, we're going to pay you back." But we need our accountant to look at people's books. When these people are coming before us, we need a little bit more diligence on your part, and I hope that we will take this into consideration going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Anyone else from the public? Okay, hearing none. Moving on.
For the approval of the minutes, February 23rd.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Leon, seconded by Dr. Faust. Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Smith.
On the minutes, Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes. Reports of county officials, county executive, and/or her designee.
No reports tonight.
Finance committee, Dr. Faust.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last Thursday, council met as the finance committee and agreed to put the following items on tonight's agenda. One is ordinance number 12, which is regarding the line, I'm sorry, the letter of credit for Pleasant Ridge Manor. Ordinance number 16 regarding the Stone Garden Grant and the District Attorney's Office. Ordinance 17, which is the creation of intellectual disabilities incident management and investigation position, something that is really kind of required for the amount of cases that are forthcoming. Both 16 and 17, we talked about moving those to second readings with a vote tonight. And then also a first reading of ordinance number 19, which is in regard to the restricting of funding for the EMTA in the charter dispute that we're having at this time. Also, resolution number eight, which is a resolution really encouraging the state officials to, in the general sense of the budget issues that we're having with the state, but more specifically the human service funding to make that hold to past levels, and also the appointment of James Wanless to the Erie County Human Relations Commission to represent Mr. Leon's district. End of report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Faust. Personnel committee, Mr. DiMatteo.
Personnel committee met directly after the finance committee. We have on the agenda tonight ordinances 14 and 15, which are old business. Both of those will be second readings. Also, moving to tonight's agenda under first readings, well, possibly a second reading is ordinance 17 for position at ECCM, and also a first reading of ordinance number 18, brought forth by the county executive concerning a published, public relations administrator. End of my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. DiMatteo. Other reports of council, Mr. DiMatteo.
Just real quick, I attended, and not to make this humorous, but I was kind of hoping that Mr. Cross would have stayed. I attended last month's meeting of the Waterford Borough. There's a new Borough President, a new Vice President, and it appears that Waterford has not, isn't going to shy away from the traffic light. They will get their second traffic light. And also, no, I did meet with, visit Erie. I attended their board meeting about 10 days ago, and at that time, we took a tour of the new hotel and parking area as it stands right now. Things are moving along very well. I guess the most noteworthy part is that of the two spaces, the retail spaces that are in the parking ramp right now, they have six tenants that have applied for those two spaces, under some very stringent rules that Erie Events has put forward as far as, you know, making sure that it's open the entire season, you know, 12 months, not a seasonal thing. My point to that is that I think we are going to have quite a bit of interest in the rest of those spots, once we get a developer to finish those up for us. End of my report.
Thank you, Mr. DiMatteo. Ms. Fatika?
I had the opportunity to meet with Bill Hagerty, the Executive Director of Emergicare, and he asked, and I accepted, a position on the advisory board. I'm taking my husband's place on that board. And in addition, just briefly, the public hearings for the next generation radio system, there were two very well-attended meetings yesterday. And just to do briefly, an update with a timeline, at this point, the five vendors that have been identified will be submitting their proposals on March 15th. They expect about 45 days to review with the committee those proposals, and the implementation period would begin May 1st this year to December 31st, 2017. That's all I have at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Fatika. Ms. Law?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the 25th of February, I attended the Metropolitan Planning Commission meeting at the Admiral Room in the main library. A copy of the bylaws was distributed to the members to go over the outdated information to update them, as they have not been amended since January 1972. Municipal solid waste plan was reported on. It's been difficult to maintain the locations of recycling, as the public is using as a dumping site for garbage. So they're having to stop some of the areas that they've had out there for recycling. And they're having a problem with the e-waste, because there are no free places to take that anymore. But you can work something out with waste management, the municipalities can, to have the e-waste picked up. The resident would have to call waste management and set up them a pickup for the e-waste. But it's done. It can be done. And then the Greenways Grant Program, in align with the community health, was discussed. The planning department will be working with the health department on this, which I'm very excited about, because when I first got here 20 years ago, the departments had their own little niches and areas, and never worked over and worked with other departments, but now they are, and I'm excited about it. A survey was sent out to all the municipalities to get a picture of their needs and their municipal matters. Not all were returned, so another mailing's going to go out. I also, too, attended the next generation radio meeting, but I attended the one at Perry Highway Hose Company on the 7th. There was a recap of the process that's already been happening to implement the system. It was assured that the system would be 95% for 95% of the time. The problem areas are some underground spaces. The frequencies are mostly in place, they have 14. There's 27 possible tower site locations that can be used once the need is determined. The design is being put in place, and the bids for the steel radios and building sheds will be written once the need is established. There will be user agreements for the equipment given to the fire companies, emergency EMS, first responders. The agreement will place the responsibility of the repair, maintenance, and replacement with the user. There's been a $2.6 million fire grant applied for, with four fire companies being the sponsors of that. Hopefully, they'll be able to receive that. If it's received, it'll be applied towards the cost of the system. Public Safety Advisory Committee has been formed, with a subcommittee on communications being formed. Anyone interested in that, is, being on that committee, is asked to express their interest. There was a question and answer period at the end. One of the questions was, the mutual aid was needed from other counties and/or states. Will they be able to communicate? And the answer was, they've already planned for this, and yes, they will be able to do that. End of report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Law. Mr. Leon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I indicated at the last meeting that I would continue to review some of the problems I envisioned at the Human Relations Commission. One of the problems is lack of staff to perform these services. There are other problems, however, I will continue to monitor and review its progress and report to council when I'm ready to make a recommendation. Please do not misunderstand my intention in this area. The Human Relations Commission is a necessary and vital part of this community. My intent is to improve the Human Relations Commission in this particular area. By the way, I also met with the new president judge on March 1st, and we discussed many issues pertaining to the courts. One of the changes delegated by the state to the Department of Human Services, providing all the domestic relations offices in the Commonwealth, a document management system. In an effort to implement this system, there were changes made to individual job responsibilities, hence a change in classification via ordinance 14 and 15 on tonight's agenda. We discussed many issues, including my resistance to vote for more staff in the district justices' offices. I won't discuss that one. Another discussion revolved around the Central Court and dangers it presents to the public. The change in the planning department has caused some changes in the offices. The planning department is now located above the library and the old Camp Tech offices. We are renovating the old planning offices to accommodate the Tax Claim Bureau, and eventually we'll set up a system that will clear the area around Central Court and allow the plaintiffs and defense witnesses to have separate areas to wait in until called upon. In conclusion, I am appointing a commissioner to the Human Relations Commission, Mr. James Wanless, as my representative. As I stated, I will continue to monitor the HRC and make periodic reports. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Leon. Moving on to old business. Item A, second reading of ordinance number 11, and title only. Mr. Smith?
A second reading of ordinance number 11, 2016. 2016 Public Health Fund Budget, revised revenue and expenditures of $59,097 for release of restricted funds for Refugee Health Case Coordinator.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Leon.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Fatika. Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Smith.
On ordinance 59, Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes. Item B, second reading of ordinance number 12, and title only. Mr. Smith?
County Council, County of Erie, Pennsylvania, ordinance number 12, 2016. An ordinance of the County of Erie, Pennsylvania, the county, authorizing and directing the execution and delivery of a guarantee agreement for the benefit of Pleasant Ridge Manor, Pleasant Ridge, and compliance with the provisions thereof, incurring non-electoral debt thereby, approving a $700,000 letter of credit agreement from Pleasant Ridge to PNC Bank, National Association, directing the proper officers of the county to take necessary actions, and repealing all inconsistent ordinances.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Law, seconded by Mr. Leon. Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Smith.
On ordinance 12, Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes. Item C, second reading of ordinance number 14, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number 14, 2016. First 2016 Domestic Relations Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $2,235 from change in positions.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Dr. Faust, seconded by Mr. Leon. Any questions? Roll call, Mr. Smith.
On ordinance 14, Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Item D, second reading of ordinance number 15, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number 15 of 2016. Sixth 2016 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $738 for transfer to domestic relations.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Law, seconded by Mr. Leon. Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Smith.
On ordinance 15, Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Faust?
Move to amend tonight's agenda by making ordinances number 16 and 17 second readings for final passage tonight.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Faust, seconded by Mr. Leon. Any discussion? Roll call on the motion. Mr. Smith?
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number 16, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number 16 of 2016. Seventh 2016 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $122,783, and creation of line items for Stone Garden Grant, fiscal year 2015 through 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Law, seconded by Dr. Faust. Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Smith.
On ordinance 16, Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number 17, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number 17 of 2016. First 2016 Erie County Care Management Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $50,040, and creation of Intellectual Disabilities Incident Management and Investigation Position.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Ms. Leon, seconded by Dr. Faust. Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Smith.
On ordinance 17, Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes. First reading of ordinance number 18, and title only.
A first reading of ordinance number 18 of 2016. A first reading of ordinance number 18 of 2016, eighth 2016 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $16,453 for creation of part-time communications and public relations administrator.
Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Faust.
Before we read ordinance number 19, I move that we amend it with a new ordinance that all of us were given in caucus. Do you have a copy of it to read?
I do.
Essentially, I'm not gonna give all the particulars of it, but essentially, that ordinance would be amended to allow, to restrict half of this year's funding rather than just the final quarter after the charter, the EMTA charter expires, and so that amount would then change to $184,065.
Motion by Dr. Faust, seconded by Mr. Leone. Any discussion? Roll call on the motion, Mr. Smith.
Dr. Faust.
Yes.
Mr. Leone.
Yes.
Mrs. Law.
Yes.
Mr. DiMaggio.
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika.
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman.
Mr. Smith, reading of the ordinance number 19 as amended, entitled only.
Ordinance number 19 of 2016, 2016 Unrestricted Gaming Fund Budget on Grant Funding to EMTA.
Item E, possible adoption of resolution number eight, entitled only. Mr. Smith.
Resolution number eight of 2016, a resolution urging the General Assembly and administration to restore funding for human services programs to historic levels and to put mechanisms in place to assure any future budget impasse or budget delay does not become a burden on Erie County and its constituents.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Leone, seconded by Dr. Faust. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Faust.
Just very quickly, I would anticipate this passes unanimously, but it's just that, you know, year in and year out, the state repeals back from their responsibilities to fund important human service programs. Erie County, to its benefit, has stepped up to the plate in many ways to fill those funding holes, but that can only go on so long, and our state officials on both sides of the aisle need to step up and not only fix this particular problem, but the general budget problem in general. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Faust. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Leone.
I would just hope that the clerk sees to it that even C cap gets a copy of what we've.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Leone. Any other discussion? Mr. Smith, roll call on the resolution.
Mr. Leone.
Yes.
Mrs. Law.
Yes.
Mr. DiMaggio.
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika.
Yes.
Dr. Faust.
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Leone.
I'll move for the appointment of James Wanless to the Erie County Human Relations Commission.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Leone, seconded by Dr. Faust. Any discussion? Roll call on the appointment, Mr. Smith.
Mrs. Law.
Yes.
Mr. DiMaggio.
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika.
Yes.
Dr. Faust.
Yes.
Mr. Leone.
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman.
Yes.
Adjourned.
We stand adjourned.